I'd like to call the September 19th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present and votes this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak during closed session public comment?
I've received none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, the City Council will recess to closed session for the purpose of conducting regular city business. Good evening, everyone. At this time, the City Council will reconvene to consider public matters. Now, members of the public may speak on any matter that's listed on the agenda. If you wish to speak on any matter listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue speaker card and provide it to the city clerk at this time. Please also provide the city clerk with any written materials that you wish to have distributed to the City Council for any item or for general public comment at this time, and as a courtesy, they'll be distributed to the City Council for review. And when it's your turn to speak, the city clerk will call your name and on the given item that you're going to want to speak about. And as required by state law, please limit your comments on agenda items to the specific item at issue. Now, if you do have comments on items that are not listed on the agenda, you can also make those comments during this time that we call General Public Comments. Finally, please only address your comments to the City Council, as staff will only respond to questions from the City Council to them and not from public speakers. Now, when the city clerk indicates and you see the green light on the podium illuminated, your three-minute comment period begins. So tonight, we always start with an invocation, and tonight, it's going to be provided by Battalion Four Chaplain Ken Kreekack from the Orange County Fire Authority. Welcome, Ken.
Thank you. I'll be sure to hold my prayer to three minutes or less. Well, I'd like to invite you to join your faith with mine in prayer. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you for your abundant blessings on this city. Please give us the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, and thank you for the ability to be involved in this very rewarding work and for the honor and joy we receive by serving others. And for those leaders who may need encouragement tonight, remind them, please, that working on behalf of others is such a noble task. Please infuse health and vitality into everyone here, and thank you for these city officials who promote peace and order. Graciously grant them the wisdom to govern and, on behalf of the constituents that they serve, give them confidence in what is good and fitting for the people they lead. Grant this council with the ability to work together in harmony. Fill them with peace in their own lives and join their tasks. Help these leaders to prioritize the things that are most important, which would benefit everyone living and working in this great, beautiful city of Lake Forest, and I pray this in the name of the Almighty God. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain Kreekack, and on behalf of all the first responders, thank you very much for your service in keeping our community safe. We much appreciate that and want to take that opportunity to recognize that, too. Thank you for coming tonight. Next, we are honored to have the Girl Scout Troop 8621. I'd like to ask you ladies to please come forward, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Always like to have these civic groups come and honor us with their presence, so we're all going to stand at this time and put our hands over our heart, and the Girl Scouts will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're honored to have you ladies here tonight here with us. We're so thankful that the next generation coming up and helping us with those things that honor America and to know what the Pledge of Allegiance is and what it means to our country and to lead us in that tonight. So, thank you very much, ladies, for being here tonight. We're going to get a photograph now. Nice round of applause for Girl Scouts Troop 8621. Thank you, ladies. Thank you for your leadership. Mr. City Attorney, are there any reportable items from closed session tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no action to report this evening.
Thank you. Now, over to closed session public comment. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak during closed session public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one request to speak, and that's Andrew O'Connor.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Andrew O'Connor, 33-year Foothill Ranch resident. I'm glad to see in the audience we have some people who are going to learn something here in three minutes. To my fellow residents, are you aware that overhears our city attorney, Matthew Richardson, from the law firm Best, Best &amp; Krieger, who charges us over $100,000 a month in attorney fees? Our budget for this fiscal year is $1.3 million. Can you believe that? That's a lot of money we're spending. When I asked Mr. Richardson, what are we spending it on? He can't tell me. When I asked documentation to go, public records request, it comes back and it's heavily redacted. That's not fair. That's not the way democracy works. On our website, we have transparency. The city manager, the mayor, and the city council are all proud of transparency, but with our city attorney, it's anything but. He works behind the scene to influence policy. Once upon a time, you could come to a council meeting and engage with the city council, engage with Bob Dunick, the city manager. He would engage back to the residents, but this guy, this city manager, has stifled that, completely stopped it. So, we don't have transparency. We don't even have democracy. I've even reached out to his executive staff about his behavior. Eric Gardner, the principal, right here, he refuses to take my emails now. He blocks them. So, when I send his boss my concerns about his behavior, he blocks them, and he won't take my telephone calls. Therefore, I've contacted the State Bar of California, Office of Chief Tribal Council of Los Angeles with documentation, and they have granted me case number 23022335 against Matthew Edmund Richardson's behavior. I'm looking forward, as he still will ignore you, will not engage with you. For years, I've been coming to this city council meeting, and the city attorney thinks he's above everybody, above the residents, above the policy, above democracy. But remember, folks, 1.3 million? What the hell are we doing that we're getting ourselves in such legal jeopardy that we're spending $100,000 a month of your hard-earned taxpayers' money? Think where $100,000 could go every month. I know where it could go. Hire more deputies that that city manager refuses to do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we're going to move on to two presentation items we have tonight, numbers three and four. Do I have a motion from the council members to approve presentations three and four? Moved and seconded? All right, let's vote. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you please read the title of presentation, item number three?
Proclamation declaring September 2023 as Service Clubs Month.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, could you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Providing a presentation for us tonight, we have our city clerk, Lisa Burgland.
Yes. Mayor and City Council, as you may recall, this item was on your agenda two weeks ago, and it was continued to this evening so we could provide an opportunity for additional service clubs to be recognized this evening. So, we do have a number of them in our audience tonight. I'm going to call each, I'll announce each club and then call each person's name that's representing each club, and they can come up to the front of the stage, and then we will usher you up onto the stage. So, if you could just line up here first, and then we'll bring you onstage. So, representing the Lake Forest Trash Walkers is Shawn Fletcher. Also representing Clean Lake Forest is Shawn Fletcher. Representing Kiwanis Club of Lake Forest is Elaine Pong. Seroptimus International is Sue Burke and Barbara Foster. Representing the Sun 'n Sail Women's Club Garden Club is Jim Riker. Representing the Lake Forest U.S. Marine Corps Support Committee First Anglico is Mary Visconti. Representing Lake Forest Chamber of Commerce is Mary Visconti and Connie Visconti. And then, representing the Rotary Club is Deepak Sinha and also Shawn Fletcher.
Who wants to come forward? Jonathan, or?
No, I think a little back would be good.
All right, if you folks could come across the stage here and stand in front of us, we'll get everybody onstage all here at the same time. And this time of year seems to be the time when we acknowledge the wonderful residents in our community that are part of these service clubs and doing the work behind the scenes that are making such a difference. And obviously, you don't get the appreciation and gratitude that you so richly deserve, so this is an opportunity for us just to pause here at this point in time, have you come up here, provide a proclamation for your service, and thank you publicly for what you're doing in our community, which we appreciate so much. And I'd like to go ahead and have everybody, let's go ahead and give them all a big round of applause for what they do in our communities. Thank you all. All right, Shawn, I understand. Did you want to say something here tonight, too? Somebody had mentioned that you may have wanted to speak about anything, or?
I started the Lake Forest Area Trash Walkers at the start of COVID. When I saw people just complaining when they were walking around, they're saying there's trash on the ground, but no one was picking it up. And so, I started doing one weekly trash walk, normally about four miles, and getting two to three bags of trash. People saw me, and they're like, hey, that's a great idea. We should form a club. And so, we formed an organization, again, Lake Forest Area Trash Walkers, and we then were approached by the city about the Clean Lake Forest event, which we were full-heartedly supporting because we complement each other. Everyone in the Lake Forest Trash Walkers picks up their trash in their area once a week, and then we meet anywhere from two to three times a month, two to three times a year to hit the big things that normally the individual people can't. And so, again, we appreciate the recognition from the city.
Thank you. And all these organizations, they are kind of a grassroots organization, kind of growing up from these kind of humble beginnings to wonderful influences in our community. So, thank you all very much for coming tonight, receiving your proclamation. We do appreciate you very much, and one more round of applause for the gratitude for these folks. And Madam City Clerk, just wanted to ask, did we have anybody that wanted to speak on this particular item we just covered?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to presentation item number four, if you could please read the title of that item.
Mr. Mayor, it appears we do have one request to speak in the audience.
Ah, from the service club members?
Yes.
Okay. Come on forward.
Just wanted to thank the city council, and I do want to acknowledge that from Rotary's behalf, we actually have a district governor here, and actually Roy, and he was the one that came up with this idea of making September as a month for recognizing, you know, these service clubs. And apart from, and apart from this city, we have had other cities in Orange County who have had similar, who have organized similar events. So, again, I wanted to thank all of you, and our objective as Rotary is to work with her, our objective is to work with other organizations, other, you know, service organizations within the city to do what we can do for community service and also to help local businesses. So, again, thank you very much. Thank you.
Right. Thank you for your comments, and, you know, making your organizations more aware for people to get involved, this is something that is a very rewarding part of life, to give of yourself and help the community. So, again, thanks, everyone, for being here tonight and letting us know who you are and the organizations that you represent here in the month of September. Okay, moving on to item number four. Madam City Clerk, could you read the title, please?
Yes, recognition of the 50th anniversary of El Toro High School.
Thank you. Madam City Manager, please introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Providing a brief introduction to this item is our city clerk, Lisa Burgland.
It's like a tennis match tonight, back and forth.
Yes, so, the 50th anniversary is happening this Friday, I believe it is. It's September 22nd. There'll be an event on campus before the football game, and we have Dr. and Principal Jimmy Martin here this evening to accept the certificate on behalf of the high school.
Okay. Why don't you come on up onstage, Dr. Martin, and we'll congratulate you here. So, before we get to picture, here's the proclamation celebrating the 50th, hard to believe, and I know we are back and forth in email talking about my wife was one of the very first graduating classes at El Toro High School, and then both of my boys also went to El Toro High School. So, it's been a rich tradition in our family, and recognizing, you know, this 50th anniversary is something that we are going to definitely participate in on Friday night. Thank you so much for extending the invitation and being persistent about it, because we had lots of emails, and I know I kind of fell down on the first one, so thank you for being persistent about that. So, is there anything that you'd like to share about the 50th anniversary?
Sure, just, we're really excited over at the home of the Chargers. We have, and like, it was mentioned, we have an event here on Friday, 4:30 to 6:30. The entire community is invited. We've got face painting and hair coloring and ice cream. All of that's free for everybody that comes. We've got some tacos for sale as well, then our football game right after. We'll have some performances by our band and cheer and choir, a couple of short speeches, and we have our El Toro High School museum set up right now in our Innovation Center, and we're bringing all our students through to see all these rich artifacts from throughout our history, and then we're going to bring that out into the lower quad for our community to enjoy at the event. So, we're really excited about it, hope to see everybody there, and it's just been a special time for us over at El Toro High School. So, thank you all so much.
Yes, thank you for your leadership. I mean, the guys at the top, the principal and running the school and carrying on that legacy is a big job. You've got big shoes to fill there, but you're doing a wonderful job, and we're so thankful that you're here tonight to receive this proclamation. Let's give El Toro High School a round of applause for the 50th anniversary. Congratulations. Thank you. particular item more than we already done here so far?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our public comment section now, and a little statement here just to make sure we're all on the same page is that if you'd like to make a comment, please fill out a blue speaker card, turn it into the city clerk, and your name will be called, and comments are limited to three minutes of uninterrupted time per person. The council and staff will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period. However, if you leave your contact information on your blue card, staff will contact you to address relevant issues that are raised during your comment. When you're called to speak, please approach the podium. Your three minutes will begin when the green light on the public comment podium illuminates. The green light will remain illuminated for two minutes. When the light changes from green to yellow, speakers will have one minute left to conclude their comments. When the light changes from yellow to red, please wrap up your thoughts and then return to your seat. A timer will no longer be displayed on the screen. Madam Clerk, have we received any requests to speak this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we've received six requests to speak. Our first three will be Andrea Alexander, followed by Bob Holtclaw, followed by Andrew O'Connor.
Okay. Welcome, Andrea.
Hi. Nice to see you. It's been a long time. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I just want to say how glad I am that the issue about the crossing guards has finally been put to rest, and it appears to be a win-win for everyone. The school district added and changed crossing guard stations to protect the children, and in so doing, also protected the city from potential liability. In August, early August, Professor Fred Smoller from Chapman University met with the mayor and two staff members to discuss the sustainability of Decathlon. Students from around the world participate in creating sustainable housing and bring their creations to the Orange County Fairgrounds for exhibition. It's quite amazing. I hope I might see some of you there. Might be a good photo op, too. If anyone wants to know more about this event, please go to ocsd23.com. Professor Smoller asked the city for $22,000 to support an educational component of the event. It is now September 19th. The Decathlon is October 5th through 15th, and he still has not heard from anyone at the city. I would appreciate that you respond to him, and we would both appreciate it if that response was a positive one. I was hoping, at the very least, the city might be able to advertise the event, but then in speaking to Jonathan, that's not possible. Lastly, I would like to address the issue of the Meadows development and the proposed school that will not be happening. Please see the stats I gave you tonight that were provided by Shawn Fletcher and taken directly from the state's database. I think it was made quite clear that we are in declining enrollment, and therefore, the state will not provide $55 million to build a new school. The $10 million paid in developer fees will be distributed to the schools that the Meadows children will be attending, so they will not lose that money. The parents mentioned Lake Forest is not rated high enough. Getting a new school does not guarantee a high rating. So, given that they will not be getting a new school, perhaps they want to take all that passion and energy, which I love, by the way, I absolutely love it, and make the school they are assigned better. Volunteer for the PTA. Volunteer in the child's classroom. Volunteer for the fundraising team. Problem? Solution. Looking for someone to blame and fighting a losing battle just wastes all that wonderful passion and energy and valuable time. But if, put it where it will do the most good. Make the school they have been assigned better. I was reminded recently at Rosh Hashanah service that you cannot control the wind, but you can adjust the sails. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker, please.
Is Bob Holtclaw.
I was going to read something, I'll just forget it. I'll just off the cuff here. I want to thank Pequeno, Councilman Pequeno, for doing the cleanup and, you know, around the city. I think it's a good idea. I don't think they should do it in Heroes Park, and probably I'll show you why. I did my own cleanup at Heroes Park. I walked up near the bushes in the back off of where Los Liso's is. Here's some of the stuff I picked up. Here's a can of Cobra beer and Budweiser. And let's see here. Oh, here's a Bud Light can. I guess Mulvaney is sleeping in our park now, so, you know, we've got to watch out there. And, you know, this is stuff that keeps on going on, and we have the bushes there being filled still with bikes, and it's embarrassing. It really is, because not only are they out there in that area, but during the time, Los Liso's road right there, kids walk there in the morning and the afternoon going to school, and you have these people out there guarding their stolen equipment, and matter of fact, like I said before, you know, they have security there. It's their security, not ours, guarding the bike parts. One last, I was there Saturday, that's when I pick all this stuff up, and they must have had a big party over there on Friday, because there was about 30 of these cans all over through the bushes, and it's a complete mess. And, you know, I looked at it, and I said, okay, I'll take a few. But, you know, something's got to be done about it. We emailed back and forth a couple of times, and I appreciate it, and let's put this on the agenda to take those bushes out. And it's not my idea, so nobody can say, oh, Jesus, Bob's idea, I don't want to do it. But, you know, it was the sheriff's idea to remove those bushes, and it's, you know, something we need to do. As a matter of fact, I agree with the lighting there, too, because, you know, some of these homeless people gets up in the middle of the night, you know, and they have to do their thing, and urinating on their neighbor on the next bush is probably pretty embarrassing. So, you know, it's a nice park. It's a beautiful park, baseball fields, and then have that in the same section is ridiculous. So, let's move those, let's get rid of those bushes and put this on the agenda. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor from Foothill Ranch for 33 years. I'm going to dovetail off Mr. Holtclaw and Heroes Park. Great memories there. My son played Little League Baseball. Shawn Fletcher left. I want to recognize him for his volunteer effort on Clean Lake Forest. I think that's great. I am disappointed in our D5 councilman, Robert Pequeno. I am disappointed in our D5 councilman, Robert Pequeno, for not taking more of an interest in the Heroes Park. Bob has come to this council three times talking about the issues. And I met Bob and went out there and I took pictures myself. I think I took five or six of them. I sent them to you guys, and Jonathan answers back, received, whatever the hell that means. But something got done. The chain link fence that was broken got fixed. There was a sign there saying, we're going to clean up everything, but right next to that sign, there was more junk. And Councilman Pequeno, did the American flag that's faded and torn, has it been replaced yet? You can say yes or no, sir. I mean, are you nodding your head yes or no? You know, you're a retired Marine and a retired deputy. I expect you to take more pride in Heroes Park that's named after 9/11. But nonetheless. The planning commission is moving forward demolishing an office park to make room for a distribution center 24 by 7, 365 days operation. Our city manager says, well, that's what needs to be done. Well, you know, our neighbor, right here, the Irvine Company has a Spectrum Terrace called Design for the Future of Work. What a beautiful complex, right there at the 405 and 133. What's our city manager want to do? She wants to tear down the business park and put up a distribution center where the people from Baker Ranch, Toronto Summit, Meadows, all came in and spent over $1 million for homes not to have it turned into a damn distribution center. And on the 5 freeway, Southbound San Canyon, is another Irvine property, Innovation Complex, and they're building a million square feet. So how can Irvine be just a few miles away, building office complexes, city manager, but in your mind, you want to build a distribution center in neighborhoods? And also, when is Portola and El Toro Road lanes going to be opened up? I drove by there, it looks like all the work is done. The lights are up and all that, but there's barricades. And you put on the leaflet promoting, oh, we're doing all this stuff for traffic. It looks like it's done, but you still can't use it. Can we get an update on that? I see wheelers here. Can we get an update on this tonight? But we can't, folks, because this is why I said earlier. You come to this meeting, you just ask a simple question. When will El Toro and Portola lanes be open? And they just stare at you.
Thank you for comments. Madam City Manager, I know we had talked a little bit earlier today. Would you give us a quick update on that intersection, or if we need to engage our public works director to give a quick update?
Certainly. The intersection at Portola and El Toro is still, the project is still moving. We are moving towards repaving that intersection, and so those lanes need to remain closed at this time.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Austin Skalski, followed by Matt, followed by Mike Bide.
Welcome, Austin, and I'm assuming your son.
I'm Brian, I'm dad, and this is Austin, my son. And good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council. This is both of our first time here at the Lake Forest City Council.
Great to have you.
And we're here today because Austin's been doing some social studies and civic stuff at school, and we wanted to come and just say thank you to the council and give a few words. We are two-year residents here of the city, and we live in Foothill Ranch. And Austin, would you like to say something to the city council? Let's get you a microphone here.
Thank you for all the soccer fields and all the parks, and you guys did a good job.
Thank you so much.
We're both involved in AYSO Soccer, and we do love Heroes Park and Lake Forest and the sports parks. So thank you, city council, and thank you for your time and investment into the parks and the green spaces.
Thank you. Yes, I have a, go ahead, Austin.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I was just going to say that, of course, I have a rich history at AYSO with over 25 years of volunteer service as regional commissioner, area director. And it's fun for us thinking back 10 years ago when we were in focus groups and looking at the new sports park and designing that and giving feedback and the city being very open to how they do these projects. And now that amenity brings so much joy and so much fun and so much entertainment and so many different aspects that that brings to us now. And to have you come tonight and appreciate that and have your son come here tonight as well, we really appreciate that. So thank you very much for letting us know. You appreciate that. We hope you have a great time out there playing soccer or whatever sports or activities that we can provide through those amenities. Thank you.
We will. Thank you.
Oh, got a city pin. Okay.
Say thank you very much.
Okay, Brian and Austin, you guys come back anytime, all right? Thanks for coming tonight. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Matt.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members and staff. My name's Matt Morissette. I have grown up in Foothill Ranch. I'm a real estate agent with Colby Banker. I work with my family. We sell homes in Foothill Ranch. And so I'm here today because we speak with a lot of people in Foothill Ranch. And one thing that I hear a lot about is, when are we going to have a pickleball court? So, you know, I'm sure you've heard the whole craze of, you know, pickleball. And, yeah, so we have two courts at the Foothill Ranch Community Park. And I'm just coming up with an idea of potentially painting pickleball lines on the courts so that we could still have the tennis courts, but also give the opportunity for people that want to play pickleball to play. I've provided more detailed ideas here, but basically, I've been to Robinson Ranch. The HOA has pickleball lines on the tennis court, and they utilize the tennis court net. And so all they have, all they did was just paint it. And so I talked to a company that basically paints lines for tennis courts and pickleball courts and installs nets. And it would be $1,000 per pickleball painting, I guess, for, you know, the court lines. And so this would be an affordable option, I think, to utilize the tennis court net, but also to, you know, have the option for the pickleball. And then there's some other options that I've provided. I've seen where there's two, there's one pickleball court on each side of a tennis court, and then they have a mobile net. And so I've provided a price range for that as well. But, yeah, I think this would be great for the Foothill Ranch community. Like I said, I speak with a lot of people, and it would, like, pickleball's already bringing a lot of people together. And so I think that this would be a cost-effective way to build, you know, the community of Foothill Ranch. So, thank you.
All right, Matt, thanks very much for coming tonight and for providing this input and giving us something to consider. So if you have additional information, we have your contact information, so we can maybe gather some more about that. Of course, we know how popular pickleball is today, and we always have to balance the different things in the city and the resources. But thank you very much for bringing this to our attention tonight.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our final speaker is Mark Bide. I apologize.
So what is your name?
Mark Rocha.
Mark Rocha!
Hey, I'm taking the Lake Forest Academy with you guys, and nice to meet, nice to see you, Deborah, Lisa, Keith. But, Mr. Pequeno, I wrestle with your son. You coached a little bit with Rocky, and I remember seeing you, and Jimmy was a dear friend and, you know, God bless his soul, but, you know, thank you for your guys' commitment to the city. Thank you for your guys'... I wanted to come to appreciate you guys, first of all, because talking about parks, the opportunity for outdoor experiences and playing in forest is like uncom, uncompared. I literally love this city. I've been here for 24 years. So, like, even after the hurricane, like, there was a beautiful tree that just got chopped right down by the hurricane. I don't know. And you look at the, it ripped, the wind ripped it off. It was almost peeling like skin. It was, it was pretty cool. But like, that got chopped up and taken out of that within a day. I was like, so amazed. I was like, I can't believe they got this down and out in one day. I didn't even see it. But that park specifically is weird. During the summer, there's a fence to fence off the soccer field in the middle of summer. I don't remember if it was this summer or last summer or one of these summers, but it was like, for months, there was a fence there. I said, why are they have a fence up in the middle of summer when everyone's supposed to be running out and playing and have soccer and this and that? But anyway, you know, bang-up job for whoever's the Parks Department for getting that squared away. But, yeah, just wanted to say hi. I, I like the ability for us to have a public comment for you guys to hear us, see us, look you in the eye, and actually have a conversation with the people, because whether you guys understand it or not, you guys are civic leaders. You guys are the ones elected to leadership of this great city, this great state, this incredible country. You know about service as a Marine. My family's full of military. Uncle was a Navy SEAL. My dad was a fireman for 38, 35 years. So service is like an ethic deep in my spirit to America. But also, when you have an opportunity to address your civic leaders, the ability for free speech to happen, a space for that to occur, how important is that? Even if they are negative, don't get discouraged. Everybody, you know, even Jesus, you know what I mean? Even Jesus had his detractors. So you can't, you know, you can't please everybody, but I'm really, really happy and I'm so proud of you guys, especially the city administration. You guys are doing an awesome service for the public, for Lake Forest Academy as well. So thank you, guys. And that's it. That's all I got.
All right, Mark, thanks for coming tonight, and we appreciate you starting the Leadership Academy. It kicked off this lax Wednesday. For those of you who are unfamiliar with that, it's an eight-week course on Wednesday nights where residents can come and they get more information about how the city is run, all the different departments and all the different aspects of city government. So it helps them become more educated about the city and also an opportunity to interact with staff and other residents. So thank you for coming tonight, Mark. Next.
That concludes our public comment for this evening.
Okay. We'll move on to the consent calendar next. And these are items five through 12. So all matters listed under the consent calendar, they're considered routine, and they'll be enacted by one vote. There's no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or city staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for some separate action. Have there been any requests to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I have requests to speak on items seven and eight.
Items number seven and eight, could you please read the title of those items?
Item seven is the certificate, certification of the warrant register, and item eight is the contract award for traffic modeling services.
Okay. Let's see if we can take care of all the other items on the consent calendar. I have a motion to approve the balance.
Move consent calendar.
Is that good? One moment. Mayor Protan Tetmer.
Yes, I would like to pull item number nine, please.
And the title of that, Madam Clerk?
Is the adoption of the resolution revising employee benefits for full-time employees.
Okay, so we had a motion from council member Voits, and was that a second from council member you, or did you have something else that you wanted to pull?
Oh, no, I just say you probably have to remake that motion that proofed the consent calendar except item seven, eight, nine.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for that. So we're going to be voting on pulling items seven, eight, and nine from the consent calendar for the time being. So we have a motion still from council member Voits and a second from council member you. Let's vote on those items of the consent calendar, except seven, eight, and nine, please.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll take each one of these consent calendar items separately. So number seven, again, read that particular item, and then we'll have discussion.
Certification of the warrant register.
Okay, and who do we have that is speaking on this particular item?
We have one speaker, and that's Andrew O'Connor.
Okay.
Connor, Mayor, being a taxpayer, I don't like to see the way we spend money in this city. You say that you'll follow up with me, so I've given you a list of 13 items that I asked you to look into and get back to me on. This is official document. You said that someone will, so I'm putting you on notice. The first one, Kidder Matthews, $35,823.61 to manage this complex. We also have an employee called Ken Yostino, whose job description is to manage this complex. Okay? Ken Yostino, I think a couple of years ago, was recognized as employee of the year. So why are we paying Kidder Matthews and Ken Yostino to manage this complex? Why did we pay, why are we paying $18,827 in civic center maintenance in June to Kidder Matthews? For what? What are they doing? You have Bright View that's taking care of drought-tolerant vegetation outside for $3,625. There's oil stains I've taken pictures of, they're still there. On both the contract with Bright View and Kidder Matthews, they're responsible for cleaning that. And I've told you, why haven't you revised the contract that one of them has to take it, care of it, and another one should take it off, and their contract should be reduced? But the oil stains are there. You can see them tonight. And if the city manager would look out her window, she can see them from there. Innovative cleaning services, do you know it costs us $33,383 a month to keep this complex clean? That's almost a half a million dollars a year. Landscapes and Bright View routinely submitting invoices for broken irrigation. Are we auditing these broken parts? You know, there are invoices for $5,000, $6,000. Multiply that times 12, that's $70,000. Who's auditing this? We're just getting an invoice from these landscape vendors, broken parts, $6,000. Who's auditing it? Superior Property Services graffiti removal. Where in the city? Is it an ongoing issue over and over again? I sent pictures of what Anaheim does with their ugly utility boxes. They put vinyl over them, make them look like bushes, look really good. Did I get an answer back? No. Why? County of Orange Animal Control, $168,705. OC Council of Government Annual News, $11,000. For what? You know, Voits gets a contribution, West Coast Arborists, but he doesn't mention that. But we just paid them $12,000, but he doesn't bring it up. Best Best and Krieger, $68,000 legal services for June.
Your time has expired, Mr. O'Connor. Thank you for wrapping up your comments now.
I just have two more. Can I talk about them, please?
You have one minute.
Thank you. Best Best and Krieger, $68,000 legal services in June. What did we do, city manager? $68,000. That's a lot of dough for this guy, one guy. Mercy House Living Centers, three checks, one for $8,000, another one for $5,000, another for $9,000. The homeless is out of control. What's Mercy House doing? We just gave them a check in 2014, almost $25,000. And homeless situations exponentially getting worse. Can I give you good solutions?
Okay, your time is up, Mr. O'Connor. Thank you very much.
Okay, you have 13 areas on here, but you said you do follow up and reply.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
This is how campaigns work in a city, though.
Okay, we're going to take each item and vote on that. So for item number seven, do I have a motion and a second to approve that for the consent calendar?
Motion made. Second?
I'm under discussion, or may I make a comment?
Sure.
So on item number seven, certification of warrant register, I'd like to make a comment. There are warrants on the register to Irvine Ranch Water District. I'm an employee of Irvine Ranch Water District, but I did not work for the department that generated these warrants. Because Irvine Ranch Water District is a public agency, and because I do not work for the department in question, I've determined that I have a non-interest in these warrants, and will vote on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
I too have a statement. There is a warrant on the register for the County of Orange. I am an employee for the County of Orange, but I do not work for the department that generated the warrant. Because the County of Orange is a public agency, because I do not work for the department in question, I have determined that I have a non-interest in this warrant, and I will vote on them.
Thank you. And I have a statement. Thank you, and I have a statement also, that there's a warrant on the register for all city management services. My wife is an employee of ACMS, and so I've determined that I have a remote interest in this warrant. I will abstain from voting on that particular warrant. Okay, we have a motion and a second for item number seven. Let's vote.
Going to reset the vote really quickly? Okay, let's go ahead one more time. That motion passes unanimously?
Thank you, so item number eight was also pulled, please read that title again.
Number eight is contract award for traffic modeling services.
Okay, and who pulled this one?
We have one speaker, that's Andrew O'Connor.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Mayor. It's not twenty-five hundred, it's not twenty-five thousand. It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars you're going to authorize tonight to, for traffic modeling services to Stan Tech Consulting Services. What are they going to model? That Caltrans hasn't already done? That we don't already have, I can't remember the acronym, of the county recirculation, all that stuff, and we, we built these roads, and that's why you, you fixed El Toro and Portola, all that data you have. Okay? Caltrans just had that open house, uh, recently here at our facility, talking about, you know, widening and all that. And I was floored because I wanted to know about El Toro Road. And on their drawing, on their paperwork, they still show the Legoland Hills Mall there. That's going to be a mall, it's not going to be retail, it's going to be three thousand apartments. And when I told the person from Caltrans, he was shocked, he didn't even know that. And then we hand over like three hundred thousand dollars to Caltrans to synchronize the signal lights? So we do all this stuff, and now you're going to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for traffic modeling. What is it? What's it look like? What do we get out of it? Sure as hell didn't do anything when you built the meadows, when you put in six hundred houses, and you can put a hundred and forty more. So right there, Big Parkway is going to be choked. What are you going to do? Model that, yeah, we got a, a lot of traffic? And tell everybody to sell their houses, move, move out of Lake Forest? This is ridiculous, two hundred and fifty thousand, a total waste of money. It's a flush. Well, what can they do? Caltrans is synchronizing the lights. Wheeler's tearing up intersections that he can't fix, okay? We're wasting money idling over there because that's not done. But you want to spend two hundred and fifty thousand. Taxpayers' money. How's that make you feel, folks?
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other council questions or comments? Do we have a motion for item number eight? Move approval? And a second from Councilmember Pecenio. Please vote.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, moving on to item number nine, the title, please.
Item nine is adoption of resolution revising employee benefits for full-time employees.
All right, did we have any speakers, or going to Mayor Protem Tetemer?
To Mayor Protem Tetemer.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So, adoption of resolution revising employee benefits, this is something that we talk about annually. And I appreciate staff spent some extra time with me to kind of walk me through some of the numbers, and I appreciate the time and effort they put into that. Um, and in conversations, it seems like there may be some value in, um, the formation of an ad hoc to try and provide maybe a little more regular analysis of this, and maybe a more, um, I won't say automated, but a little more, uh, a better model on how we can do this, because it's such a dynamic thing with changing, um, levels of service and costs which are, in some cases, quite exorbitant in terms of their annual increases. So I'm supporting the item, uh, but would ask for support that we form an ad hoc committee, or the city manager form an ad hoc committee to spend some time looking at this issue and see if we can come up with a better model on how to address these issues going forward, um, and certainly in time for next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, council discussion?
No, I, I, I think that, you know, this is something that we want to be competitive out to the market, but I think that we should be looking at the long-range, um, consequences of, of these kind of things, and staying with the current, um, market that's out there with other cities. Um, I support that, that motion, and I'll second that motion, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Pecenio?
Yes, and, well, I'll piggytail on what, uh, Councilmember Voits said. I think the mayor and Mayor Protem should be on that ad hoc.
I think you're out of order, Councilmember Pecenio. Did you have any comments, Councilmember you?
I'm good with that, yeah, go ahead.
All right, well, since I faithfully serve with Mayor Protem Tetemer on the audit committee, and this is a financial consideration here, and we all know how medical expenses and insurance plans have gone crazy over the last few years, I am happy to serve on that ad hoc committee as long as you, you are as well.
I'm happy to serve if asked.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mayor Protem Tetemer for an ad hoc committee to study this and review this and provide guidance, and we have a second from Councilmember Voits. Now it's time to vote.
And the motion includes approving the item?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Need one more vote, please? Doesn't say. Okay, we'll restart the vote. There we go. That motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, we have two public hearing items tonight, number thirteen and fourteen. Madam Clerk, please read the item thirteen.
Fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also known as our CAEPER.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam City Manager, could you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, tonight we have a presentation by our senior planner, Ron Santos. He's going to talk to us about all the things that were accomplished last year with the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Welcome, Ron, good to see you again.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, good evening, good evening, members of the city council. Sorry, just waiting for the PowerPoint to load up there. Okay, so this item is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, otherwise known as the CAEPER. As background to the report, uh, Lake Forest has been a recipient of the federal Community Development Block Grant since nineteen ninety-four, which is just three years after incorporation. CDBG is a formula grant allocated to local jurisdictions to support decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. The formula that is the basis for the grant factors the city's population count, the number of people in poverty, and either the number of overcrowded units or the number of pre-nineteen forty housing units to determine the amount of funds the city receives each year. The program must primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, which means those earning up to one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. For a household of four, the current income limit is one hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. Through fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the city has received over thirteen million dollars of CDBG funding. The Consolidated Annual Performance Report is the fiscal year-end performance report for the CDBG program that must be submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development annually. The report describes the city's accomplishments and progress in meeting the goals and objectives outlined in the city's five-year consolidated plan. The consolidated plan identifies priority housing and community needs and activities to be carried out using CDBG funds. For fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, um, this is the third reporting year for the two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-four consolidated plan. The current CAEPER reports progress corresponding to two different funding sources, regular CDBG and CDBGCV. Regular CDBG funds for the program year included the two thousand twenty-two grant, unspent prior year funds, and program income received during the year. Program income consists of repayments of housing rehabilitation loans issued by the city and any earned interest received during the year. The second funding source, CDBG coronavirus funds, were awarded to the city as part of the Federal Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act of two thousand twenty, also known as the CARES Act, the purpose of which is to prevent, prepare for, or respond to the pandemic. CARES Act funds were awarded to cities in two rounds in April and September of two thousand twenty. The tables on this slide summarize the total regular CDBG funds available in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, which was just over one million, forty-nine thousand. And the fund expenditures over the same period, which totaled just over seven hundred and forty-four thousand. Expenditures during the year included funds allocated and committed in prior years, meaning that we had projects that took more than a year to complete. It also means that the funding total and the expenditure total in these tables are not figures that would be expected to match. Activities completed during the year include public service grants to nonprofit agencies, eight in total, which assisted two thousand, eight hundred and forty individuals. Seventeen housing rehabilitation loans issued to Lake Forest homeowners for needed repairs, which totaled three hundred and sixty-two thousand. And five grants to Lake Forest homeowners that paid for repainting of their homes. Additionally, um, there were improvements at El Toro Park completed and construction of accessible curb ramps and numerous street intersections in the southeastern part of the city. Also this year, the city council authorized staff to negotiate an agreement with families forward to use allocated CDBG funds for an affordable housing project. Lastly, the city used seven point six percent of the grant plus program income to administer the program. That's seven point six out of twenty that federal regulations allow, twenty percent. This chart shows regular CDBG expenditures during the year by four broad categories. Housing, which includes rehab loans and paint grants. Assistance to homeless and at-risk individuals. Other public services and program administration. The assistance to at-risk individuals consists of services provided by nonprofit organizations that received CDBG funding from the city. So that includes families forward, South County outreach, and family assistance ministries. The services include food and assistance with rent and utility bills. Moving on to the CDBGCV grant, the CARES Act funds, these tables summarize the total funding received from HUD, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. And the expenditure of CDBG funds during the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year and to date. Expenditures during the year included sub-recipient grants to nonprofit organizations providing public services, funding for a Meals on Wheels program, and funding used to assist with the purchase of a wheelchair-accessible van to transport seniors to medical appointments. This slide provides a further summary of CDBGCV activities during the year, which includes public service grants to nonprofit organizations that assisted five hundred and twenty-two individuals, equipment and food purchased for the senior center, and design work for a new patio that will allow seniors to better utilize outdoor space and to minimize exposure to the COVID-nineteen virus. To date, the city has used only five point three percent of the grant for administration, again, where HUD regulations allow twenty percent. These charts provide additional summaries of CDBGCV fund expenditures to date. As shown on the chart, the lion's share was spent on public services, followed by business assistance grants. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt the draft resolution approving the CAEPER and direct staff to forward their report to HUD. To date, we have not received any public comments on this item, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Let me move on to our city clerk and ask to see if we had any requests to speak on this item tonight.
Not on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, uh, accept any comments from council members? Councilmember you?
Thank you. Uh, we just see that number of five point three, and I think the HUD allowable cap is twenty percent. I was just wondering why our city's spending is relatively conservative.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember, and members of the city council. The, the city is able to maintain, um, a, a minimal amount of expenditure on administration costs because we run an efficient program. Uh, we also have, uh, consultants that charge us a reasonable, uh, rate for their services and are also efficient. Um, and we try to focus on assisting, using the funds to assist the community on needed services consistent with the intent of the, of the grant program.
Thank you. Councilmember Voits?
Yeah, Ron, I, I just want to, um, as a councilman, I want to say thank you. Um, you know, we've been doing this since nineteen ninety-four, and, um, I think that some, most of the success we have is because of you and the consultants that we have out there, so, um, um, could you, um, further detail the, um, the acronym, CDBG? What's that stand for, for the listeners?
CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant, and it's a, it's an annual federal grant awarded to the city, um, that is, uh, um, based on a, a formula that used to calculate the grant each year. It, it also, of course, is related to the federal budget, but once the budget is determined and that formula is applied to determine how much funds each entitlement city gets.
And so that's stayed pretty steady, um, all through your tenure?
It's, uh, we've, in general, it's been increasing slightly each year. I, I think over the course of the last five years, we might have had a, a small dip one year, but the general trend is, has been a slight increase each year.
Well, I want to, I thank you, um, for, um, managing and helping us be good stewards of that money. So it's coming in from the federal government, basically, to our local city.
That's correct.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to have a motion for accepting the... A motion from Councilmember you.
I will second.
And seconded by Mayor Protem, let's vote.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, moving on to the next item for public hearing, number fourteen. Madam Clerk, please read that title.
Yes, item fourteen is the annual review of development agreements.
Thank you, and our Madam City Manager, for an introduction, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our economic development manager, Adrian Grahava, who's going to walk us through the annual review of development agreements.
Oh, I see, I need to open the public hearing officially, there we go. All right, Adrian, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is the annual review of development agreements. Do you mind advancing the slide? Thank you. State law and the terms of the development agreements, also referred to as DAs, require the city to conduct an annual review of active DAs for compliance with their respective terms and conditions. Good faith compliance shall be established if the owner is in compliance with every term and condition of their DA. The first DA review was conducted in August of two thousand nine. Since that time, the city council has conducted DA reviews for each fiscal year and found that each owner has been in good faith compliance with its respective DA requirements and obligations. with its respective DA requirements and obligations. This DA review is centered on development activities associated with each property owner through fiscal year 2022, 2023. The DA review includes the following developers and corresponding development projects. The Portola Center features Baldwin and Lancia. The Toronto Summit Project features Lennar. The Terasina Project features Shea Homes. And the Meadows Project features Toll Brothers. This image is included as an attachment to the agenda report. The red box indicates the total number of permits pulled through fiscal year 2022, 23. The Lancia Project is considered complete and will not require a review in future years. Additionally, construction is complete in the Lennar and Shea Projects. Once acceptance of streets is satisfied, both of these projects will be considered complete and will not require future reviews. At this time, staff recommends the city council find that each property owner to be in good faith compliance with their respective DA for activities ending June 30, 2023. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, Adrian. Madam City Clerk, we received the request to speak on this item.
Yes, we have one request to speak. That's Andrew O'Connor.
Mayor, I think you remember, if you can, back to 2015. But before that, let me preface something from the executive summary. And it's in quotes. It says, "good faith compliance." And I'm going to go through the three developers, who I believe did not do good faith compliance. Starting with Baldwin Brothers. 2015, when they were developing your backyard, there are proctoral hills that you're so fond of, they buried chemicals. Thought nobody'd catch them. Well, guess what? When Lancia started developing that land, guess what popped up? A bunch of chemicals. And they were fined $6.6 million for that. So today, you're going to say that they're great when they do that to the community? Currently, there's an issue going on with the parking requirement. The parking ratio, that's already brought up to the planning commission. And they're well aware of it. They're out of compliance. But here, it says good faith compliance. What's it going to be, Mayor? You going to listen to the planning commission? Or are you going to listen to your own information? Lennar, right over here, Toronto Summit. Shame on you, city manager. Shame on you, city attorney, for not forcing them to build the one acre or two acre open space for the 200-plus residents. You allowed them to slip out of it. It got moved around. You took it, you gave it to the Irvine Ranch Water District. You sold for $14,000. All done and clean. So those families don't have an open space for their kids to run around in. Toll Brothers, this whole Meadows and the proposed school site that they put up on their graphics and their signs, that's good faith compliance when they lied to 600 prospective home buyers that there's going to be an elementary school there? Really? City manager, city attorney, mayor, city council? You're just going to let these three developers get away with this stuff? And not hold their feet to it? Obviously. Obviously. There's an article coming out tomorrow in the Orange County Register, and Pequeno was quoted, and he still blames the school district for not building it. Shame on you. Shame on you. That's not, you don't know the facts. You have no idea. You weren't there at the meetings. I was. School district never said in the beginning, "We didn't want it." They got let into it. But you, sir, don't know what the hell you're talking about, which is always the case.
All right, your time has expired, Mr. O'Connor. Please wrap up your comments. Thank you.
I wrapped them up, and Pequeno, you don't know your facts.
Okay, we're now going to close the public hearing. Do any members of the council have any comments or questions regarding this topic? Councilmember you.
Mark. Yeah, I read the news in Orange County Register regarding the fine Baldwin Company received, probably early this year. I don't know all the detail of that because that's way before my time in Lake Forest. So could you please give a little information regarding that? And what that has to do with the review here?
Certainly, an article came out about a fine that was levied against the Baldwin Company by the San Diego Regional Water Quality Board regarding some water quality issues that happened on their property. There were a lack of... Well, I believe it had to do with not capturing rainwater on their property during a storm as they were required to do. That issue, though, is completely separate from the requirements that are contained within the development agreement that the city signed with Baldwin in 2008, approximately 2008. So it's outside of what we're dealing with when we talk about a review of the development agreements.
Thank you for the clarification here. Any other comments, questions from council members? Okay, I need a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Councilmember White, and seconded...
Second.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to the last item, my guest of the evening. We have one discussion item, number 15. Madam City Clerk, could you read the title? Please.
Legislative and Regulatory Matters.
All right, Madam City Manager, could you please introduce this item?
Yes, tonight we have a report by our deputy city manager, Sean McGovern.
Evening, Sean.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This is... Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This is a summary of legislative matters with the potential to impact the city of Lake Forest. Just a quick refresher, city council approves every year a legislative platform. Staff then use that legislative platform to generate position letters for the mayor to sign. And those letters get sent to legislators at the state Capitol that are promoting bills that are either consistent or inconsistent with the city's legislative platform. September 14, so last Thursday, was the last day for that bills could have been passed by both houses, the General Assembly and the State Senate, in order to be considered by the governor for this legislative session. So any bill that didn't pass both houses by September 14 is now either completely dead, or it's considered a two-year bill where it has the potential to be brought back at next year's legislative session, but it's not going to come back this year. So Governor Newsom has until October 14 to either approve the bills that have been sent to his desk or issue a veto. If he issues a veto, it will get sent back to both houses. And to override a veto, it requires a two-thirds vote of each house. So here's just a brief summary of all of the bills that the city council has taken a position on this year. And I'm going to try to quickly go through each one. About a third of these have passed. And I'll try to categorize them for simplicity here. AB 550, this would have mandated public hearings and the quantity of hearings after the city receives its point-in-time count results, which happen every other year here in the county of Orange. That would be an unfunded local government mandate. We already provide a variety of outreach related to our homeless problem and the point-in-time count anyways. AB 1166 is kind of a Good Samaritan law, which would provide liability protections for residents that render Narcan and other opioid antagonists to somebody that's experiencing an overdose. It's similar to the law that provides legal protections for people that render CPR to other citizens that are in need. And that bill passed, and that's a bill that the city council supported. SB 43, this bill modifies the legal definition of gravely disabled, which was established in the state of California, I believe, in 1967. And this adds to that definition of gravely disabled. Someone's inability to either be aware or know that they need to seek medical care, adequate shelter, self, some kind of self-protection, and their own safety. So unfortunately, with some of the city's homeless population, we do kind of see this, but there's not much that we can do as a result of the definition of gravely disabled. This bill, if it's passed by the governor, would make it easier to compel people to receive some kind of mental health or psychiatric intervention that they would need in order to survive. So that's something that this city council has supported, and that bill passed. So within the next month or so, we will know if that's going to become law here in the state of California. SB 363 was kind of a sister bill to SB 43. This would have established an inventory of available beds to send people to if they are committed under the definition of SB 43. That bill did not pass. The category of law enforcement, AB 1463 would have mandated certain privacy requirements for ALRP systems. The city has an automated license plate reader system already. It's the Flock camera system. We have about 50 cameras set up around town. The Orange County Sheriff's Department, who administers the city's Flock system, is already subject to their own internal privacy policy, which largely mimics what was in this bill anyways. That is another mandate that the city council opposed and was not passed. On the topic of law enforcement, AB 1708 would have made some changes to Prop 47, which was the ballot initiative that passed about four or five years ago that amended the definition of shoplifting. So this would have kind of shored up and gave enhanced ability of prosecutors to prosecute people that commit shoplifting offenses that involve those other categories, vehicles, firearms, credit cards, and other items. That's something that this council and many other cities supported, but was not passed by the state legislature. Some other statewide issues, AB 972. This would have streamlined the state's grant funding process. A lot of times when grant funding comes out, it's an overly complicated process for cities to comply with, apply for, and then administer those funds, particularly smaller local government agencies that don't have abundant staff. This bill was supported by the city and spearheaded by Cal Cities, but unfortunately, it did not pass. SB 252 was another kind of high-profile bill that the city council received updates on earlier this spring. This would have required the CalPERS Investment Board to direct the agency to divest from fossil fuel-related investments by 2031 and onward. And a lot of people were worried that this bill was an intervention into the kind of financial responsibilities of CalPERS to shore up the pension fund. We want CalPERS to make money because that means that the city has less exposure to any funding deficiencies that CalPERS may have in the future. So the city was opposed to this. I think every city was, and it was not passed. So our local government mandates, AB 1572. This would start to prohibit the use of potable water to irrigate certain types of non-functional turf. And non-functional turf would exempt things like sport fields and things where you use the grass for that sports or recreation purpose. And this bill includes restrictions that start to impact local governments by January 1, 2027. Originally, staff recommended that the city council oppose this bill because the bill did not include a funding component to help cities transition non-functional turf over to either some kind of functional turf or some kind of turf that won't require as much irrigation. The bill was amended several times into the late night of Thursday, September 14. And it now includes reference to a funding component. So staff's recommendation is to just kind of let this sit and play out, if you will. It's a better bill. It's not a perfect bill. But it literally just came out, and it was amended four or five times. So we need to get a kind of better understanding of this bill. And we will keep an eye on that and update the council accordingly. AB 1637 would mandate that cities only use .gov or .ca.gov websites. That's the ending domain name. The city is opposed to that because it's an unfunded mandate. And unfortunately, that bill passed. We don't think that's going to impact Lake Forest anytime soon because our websites currently comply with that. SB 423 extends a bill, SB 35, that was passed, I think, either 2017 or 2018, that would require cities to provide ministerial approval of some housing projects, so long as those housing projects included a certain amount of marked affordable housing. The city has had no projects that have been proposed that would have met the requirements of this law. But this is kind of more of the same from Sacramento mandates about local governments building more housing. And the city was opposed to this. That bill did pass. SB 7, kind of similar to the other homeless-related bill. This would have mandated the provision of housing by cities in accordance with the point-in-time count numbers that are released every two years. So if the point-in-time count number was 75, cities would have to find some kind of semi-permanent or permanent shelter for those individuals that were identified in the point-in-time count. There was no funding component associated with that. That would have been a huge expense. The city's position was to oppose that, and that bill was not passed. So the staff's recommended action is just to receive and file this report. And the mayor will have the opportunity to sign bills for all those that have passed to reaffirm the city's position and send that on to the governor's office probably by Monday of next week. And that's all I have for the group unless there's any questions.
Okay, Sean, thank you for the presentation. Check with our city clerk, see if you've got a request to speak on this item.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Council comments. Councilmember Pequeno.
Thank you, Mayor. Turned around. So SB 43, Sean, it was talking about the gravely disabled. So that's really the 5150, and it's got nothing to do with care court. So the difference between the 5150 and the 5250, 5150, they can hold somebody up to 72 hours. And the 5250, they can hold somebody for an additional 14 days. Where that's mandated, because that's a... But the care court, there is no mandate. You know, that's voluntary compliance. That has no teeth. So that's the difference in the two. When you hear about the homeless, there's the two different ones. And then for Prop 47, you know, I know they were trying to kind of piecemeal what they can do to make Prop 47 go away. But I was in a Zoom meeting with a state senator about three or four weeks ago. And when she was talking, she was talking about her vision and what she's looking into. And nowhere in there did she talk about crime. So I asked her about crime. I said, "Hey, what are you guys doing about Prop 47? That needs to go away. You need to reverse that to make... To hold people accountable." And her response was, "Because the laws disproportionately affect people of color." And I was like, "What about accountability?" And she said, "I'm just not supporting it." So that's why you're seeing the uptick in crime, because they won't attack Prop 47 like we should. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, any other comments? Is this a receive and file, or do we need to vote on this one? Okay, so we're receiving and filing that one. Going to move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further this evening.
Thank you. Moving to city council comments. Councilmember Pequeno.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two things. One, thank staff again for all their great work. And welcome to the big show, Sean, up with the big people. And we had clean Lake Forest this weekend, and a couple of my colleagues showed up. Thank you for that, and thank you for your support and making it happen. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Council member Voits.
Nothing further at this time.
Council member you.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Nothing further.
Okay. Well, I just want to kind of piggyback on the National Cleanup Day and just, you know, your leadership and then also the partnership that we have with Saddleback Church. And it's something that we may take for granted a lot of times, the partnership we have with such organizations that will lend the use of their space and their resources to help support these things that come together. So I just wanted to acknowledge that partnership and how great it is that we have those kind of resources here in the, in the city. And then I had the opportunity to kind of be here for the Leadership Academy and kind of kick that off. So got a lot of people here for that, I think 30 to 40 folks that are attending. So it's great that our residents are taking interest in how city government is being run, and so it was very nice to meet some of those folks. And I know that, again, our city staff is working just those half-days, again, you know, seven in the morning till seven or eight o'clock at night or later. So appreciate that very much, too. All right. Thanks very much for attending, either online or here in person. We appreciate that. Time for us to adjourn. Good night.